Again, one last call for Councilmember Cardenas, Councilmember Hahn, Councilmember Weezer, Councilmember Parks, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Rosendahl, Councilmember Smith, Councilmember Weiss, and Councilmember Wesson. We are still at five members and need five more to join us as soon as possible when we're going live right after this. Thank you.
I want to ask my questions in.
Good morning, Los Angeles. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. It is Wednesday, September 20, 2006, and we want to welcome the members of the public and our viewing audience to this meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. We meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m., always here in room 340 John Farrow Council chambers, except for the first Friday of the month in which we meet in Van Nuys City Hall. We invite members of the public to testify here before the City Council during our general public comment and for items that have been agendized for public comment, and our agendas are available here in City Hall or by going online to our city's homepage at www.lacity.org. We welcome our viewers, whether it's the live viewers right now or during our rebroadcast on Channel 35, available through the city's cable system. Channel 35 gives you information as well about the workings of government and the latest news from City Hall. You can watch us via your computer through that same homepage at www.lacity.org where you can get live streaming video casts of the council meetings. And lastly, if you're not near a computer or television, you can call in to our city's council phone system in which you can listen to the meetings of the City Council or any of our committees at (213) 621-CITY. That's (213) 621-CITY. We invite folks to give public comment here, or if you are closer to the Van Nuys City Hall, we also take public comment via remote facility here, or when we're in Van Nuys, you can always come down to City Hall and give your comments through our facility here, and we're able to watch that in Van Nuys as well. Right now, I want to thank the council members that are here, pursuant to our own council rules, in timely fashion to be in council 10 o'clock. That's Councilmember Gruel, Councilmember Padilla, Councilmember Perry, Councilmember Zine. With myself, that makes five. There are 15 members, and we need two-thirds to constitute an official quorum, so we're waiting for five more members. At this time, I'd like to call our council members who are not yet here to make their way down. Councilmember Cardenas, Councilmember Hahn, Councilmember Weezer, Councilmember Parks, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Rosendahl, Councilmember Smith, Councilmember Weiss, Councilmember Wesson. If you would all make your way down as soon as possible. Councilmember LeBanche is excused today from this meeting, but the other council members are expected and should be here at any moment. As soon as we have a quorum, we will begin the meeting, and thank everybody for their patience, and welcome again to members of the public. Thank you. I'd like to make a final quorum call to Councilmember Cardenas, Councilmember Hahn, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Rosendahl, Councilmember Smith, and Councilmember Weiss. We are still two council members short of a quorum. It is about 10:13, and if we don't have a quorum in the next couple minutes, we will adjourn the meeting. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Weezer, LeBanche, Padilla, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present, and a quorum. Mr. President?
Didn't I hear you on that FedEx commercial a while back? That was pretty quick. All right. First item of business, please.
Approval in the minutes.
Mr. Parks moves, and Ms. Perry seconds. If there's no objection, those will be approved. Next item.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
I'll move those, and Ms. Gruel will second. If there's no objection, that too will be unanimously approved. Let's run through the agenda, and then we'll come back to public comment, actually.
Mr. President, before beginning the regular agenda, there has been a request to send item 21 back to the Energy and Environment Committee.
Colleagues, is there any objection to sending item number 21 back to our Energy and Environment Committee? If not, so ordered. Next items.
There's also been a request to continue item 84 to Friday.
Okay. Colleagues, is there any objection to continuing item number 84 until Friday, that is September 22nd? Seeing none, that too will be approved. Next items.
And one last request to continue the closed-session item on the regular agenda, item 87, one week to September 27th.
Okay. Colleagues, any objection to continuing that item as well for one week? Seeing none, that too will be the order. Next items.
On the regular agenda, items 1 through 7 are street lighting district items noticed for public hearing. Council should continue the hearing and ordinances to October 11th.
Okay, colleagues. If there's no objection, we will continue those hearings until the 11th of November -- sorry, October, 11th of October. Next items, please.
Item 8 is a public convenience or necessity item in Council District 9, and the recommendation is to grant the application.
All right. That will require a motion, Ms. Perry. Would you like to move the recommendation for item number 8 to grant the -- grant the license, Ms. Perry? Ms. Perry?
I'm sorry.
Would you like on item number 8 in Council District 9, the recommendation is to grant the license? Would you like to move that?
Well, I consistently sought denial. We're opposing.
Okay.
This one we're --
All right.
This is a bear in line. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Different one?
Please, yeah. Okay, yes, approval.
We'll move that? Okay. Let's open the roll on that motion to approve. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
And just for clarification, Mr. President, that is not for a full liquor license. That is a conditional use permit for beer and wine only.
Got it.
With conditions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perry, for that clarification. Next items.
Item 9 is a variance appeal, and the applicant consents to a continuance to November 1st.
Okay. If there's no objection, we will continue that till the 1st of November. Next item.
Item 10 is a conditional use appeal, and the applicant consents to a continuance to October 18th.
October 18th. If there's no objection, that will be continued as well. Next item.
Item 11 is a confirmation of a building and safety lien notice for public hearing, and there is a card on that item.
Okay, let's call that special for the card. Next item.
Items 12 through 41 are items which public hearings have been held. Item 12 is a commission appointment. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Let's see. That is -- colleagues, we're going to be, if there's no objection, taking the Jones issue out of order, so if there are commissioners you'd like to move quickly or anything by consent, we'll do that ahead of time. Otherwise, we'll be coming back. There's no objection to anything called special, so on those, we have -- there's a commissioner for El Pueblo and also a commissioner for the Harbor Area Planning Commission. Would you like to just move those, or would you like to call it special?
An amendment?
Okay. Call 26 special for an amendment, Mr. Reyes. Why don't we go ahead and hold the commissioners for now? I believe, actually, on 13, it's a receive-and-file. Is that correct?
The Plum Committee recommended to receive-and-file it, so that committee report can be adopted.
Because he's withdrawn his name. Let's keep that, then, with the group. Let's not call that special, just 12. Other specials, colleagues?
20. Number 20.
20 for Mr. Zine. Mr. Padilla?
Item number 9, the applicant contends to a continuance on November 1st.
Okay. Yep. That will be ordered if there was no objection. Any other specials? Mr. Parks?
I'd like to hold 17 to speak to the city attorney.
Okay.
And then on 39, I think those two reports are identical, the T Committee and Budget and Finance. We moved both of them.
Okay.
And then 40, we moved the joint report.
Okay. I'll second both of those.
And then on the 41, I think the record shows that there's two reports. I think there's only one, the Budget and Finance. It was waived out of public safety.
Okay. We'll move that one as well, then. Okay. Colleagues, any other specials? If not, let's open the roll on the balance. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay. Mr. Reyes, have the technical -- Mr. Reyes, do you want to give the technical amendments now, or are we ready to circulate them?
That -- I believe it's being circulated. There's a motion.
All right. We'll wait till it gets around, then we'll just take it on consent.
I'm ready to speak to enough. You'd like it?
Go ahead. Why don't you read into the record?
Item 26, colleagues, is an amendment that essentially asks the CRA to provide information to each and every one of us when it comes to the understanding on the effectiveness of the community advisory committees and/or the PACs. What I'm asking is to have the CRA provide six different measures, if you will, that quantifies the number of meetings, number of individuals attending, meetings canceled, number of items brought before the CAC for consideration to allow the council an understanding of their level of work and level of productivity. It's -- I ask for an I vote. It's a friendly amendment. I believe it gives us more information to make informed decisions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Why don't we open the roll on item 26 if there's nobody else wishing to be heard? Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved, and 27 will send forthwith if there's no objection. Next items, please.
Items 42 through 86 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration. Item 42 is a commission appointment, which would leave council items 43 through 86.
Okay, let's hold 42, and we have cards on 62, 63, 69, 70, 78, and 86, so we'll call those special. Ms. Perry?
Yes, Mr. President, I'm sorry. I missed, I believe it was item 27 needed to go forthwith.
Yes. Just sent that forthwith. Thank you.
Okay.
So we'll call those specials. Any other specials, colleagues? Seeing none on the balance, let's open the roll. Let's close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved as well. Next items.
On the continuation agenda, items 88 and 89 are items which public hearings have been held, and there is a new ordinance, I understand, that will be circulated later on item 88. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Let's hold that on the desk till we get the new ordinance. 89? Okay, Ms. Hahn, we'll call 89 special for you, and if we can now call roll -- recess that for a moment and call the roll for the special meeting.
Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Weezer, LeBanche, Padilla, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 13 members present and a quorum.
Okay. First items, please.
Item 1 is a street vacation item notice for public hearing, and I do understand there's a card on that.
Okay. We'll call that special for the card, the public.
And item 2 is your closed-session item.
We will call that special as well, and if we can continue the special meeting into the regular meeting right now, and I'd like to recognize Mr. Padilla for an introduction at this time.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I've had a chance to introduce him to many of you as the meeting was getting started, but I want to welcome to Los Angeles, and his first time in City Hall, which I personally find hard to believe, Mr. Sal Roselli, who's president of the United Healthcare Workers, a statewide union in California representing employees in the hospital and healthcare industry. Many of you are aware of recent sort of reorganizing within SEIU on a statewide basis. A lot of us have had wonderful relationships with Local 399 here locally. It was Local 250 in the north. They've come together to form a statewide union, and Sal is certainly no stranger to the labor movement and civic and political affairs in the Bay Area. As I've spent a little bit of time there recently, it's clear that he's one of the most influential people in Bay Area politics, and it's a privilege to welcome him here to Los Angeles, as he now represents many of our constituents under his union. His involvement is not just within SEIU, where he serves as a national vice president, and with the California Labor Federation, where he's also vice president there, but he's been a strong voice for the interests of workers and of patients, helping set national standards within the industry for proper care for the people we call constituents. So please, let me welcome and ask to say a few words, Mr. Sal Roselli, as I present him with this resolution on behalf of the council and the mayor. Welcome to City Hall and thanking him for his leadership.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Councilpeople, it's, you know, I'm honored to be here. Our union's, you know, primary mission is to unite healthcare workers, to change their lives, which we're very successful at with the help of many of you, and equal to that is accomplishing universal access to quality healthcare to everyone that lives in this state. That's our number-one initiative that we intend to accomplish by 2008. Again, honored to be here. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much. Great to have you here, and thank you, Mr. Padilla, for the introduction as well. At this time, we'll go through our public comment, starting with Derek Morris. I'd like to come forward. If you can set the clock at two minutes, Derek Morris will be our first speaker, to be followed by Zuma Dog.
Yes, my name is Derek Morris, and I'm from Lancaster. However, the homeless situation, I have a three-year plan that I think everybody could win if we were to consider this. First, I'll try to prevent the young people from going homeless, the children, and we have to look at the parents' situation, the drugs they're using, the gangs, and their performance in schools. And then the homeless folks, I'd like to find out, like, how can I help you to become another productive member of society? Some might need housing, they might need healthcare, physical or mental, and so on. And finally, those individuals who are working and have a potential to come homeless because they're doing things like smoking up the money, they don't pay their rent, and not being able to perform at work. I think the government should step in and say that somebody who's working before they're fired should be consulted, and if it's not -- if they're not paying the rent, then maybe a management situation from the paycheck straight to the rent, so they don't go homeless. And instead of firing them, consult again the government, who would say, "Well, why are you not performing, or what is the problem?" And if it's a drug problem, try to get them the help they need. In other words, you're trying to maintain the status quo so that we could solve the homeless problem. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Zuma Dog is our next speaker, and then Matt Dowd after that.
Thank you very much. What a privilege it is to be able to have this opportunity to address council and the entire community, TV 35. I was going to talk about some other things, but I'm a little bit upset that Eric Garcetti cut my mic off yesterday and squelched my free speech, so let's just talk about Prop R. today. Yesterday, there was an item on the agenda that the city council put in for money to defend a court fight to keep Proposition R. on the ballot. First of all, let's explain to everybody what Proposition R. is. City council right now serves two four-year terms. Well, they want to serve three terms. I would too, with all the financial perks and benefits it means. Unfortunately, they're being deceitful. According to Rocky Del Godillo, he says that the verbiage is deceiving to the people. He's asking them to be honest with the voters, and he has warned that this opens up the city for court challenges, which it did. This was supposed to be put before the Ethics Committee, and they -- what they did is they took this Prop R., they jammed it in here at the last second. They didn't allow it to be vetted publicly. They didn't allow it to go through the Ethics Commission. What they've done, they've combined two items. They want you to vote for ethics lobby reform. Prop R. puts ethics into campaign money. Now, everybody wants that. Unfortunately, they also mingled an item that allows them to extend their terms from two terms to three. They call it term limits. Well, yeah, first they raise it to three, then they limit it. Well, great. So let's say you want ethics reform put into campaign lobbying, but you do not want to extend, your councilpeople, because there's a big ethics problem. Well, you don't have a choice. It's a package deal, and Rocky Del Godillo It's a package deal, and Rocky Delgado says that that's unconstitutional, it's confusing to voters, it wasn't put before the Ethics Commission, and now if this goes through, we will be paying a lifetime of health benefits for these council people, because two terms they don't get it, three terms they do. No wonder they wanted. Zuma Dog for City Council! Booty-hoo!
Matt Dowd is our next speaker.
Thank you very much. Channel 35, City of Los Angeles, welcome to my public comment. This is public testimony, I was going to talk about a couple of things, but I want to, I want to talk about Chief Bratton's bodyguard who follows him everywhere. I was over at the police commission a few weeks ago, and associate of mine, Zuma Dog, was walking along the hallway making a video just like this, saying, "I support Chief Bratton over the drug thing against Councilman Parks." And his bodyguard body slammed him into the wall, I've got it on tape, it's going up on youtube.com tonight, because that was uncalled for, and that's the kind of tactics they're using down there, is just bullying, you know, anywhere they want, and people come up and get, you know, want to talk to the chief, and they get body slammed into the wall and elbowed out of the way, it's not really required, and I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the people. Thank you very much.
A. Sax is our next speaker. Sir, A. Sax, we got your card, don't worry. Is A. Sax here? Yes, come on forward, sir. Welcome to City Council.
Good morning, thank you very much. Yes, I'd like to speak about something that was on yesterday's agenda. Item number 29 from yesterday's agenda, and I'd just like to read it, I believe it was put on hold, and my, the reason I'd like to speak about it is because of the language that it contains. This was an item, communication from the city attorney relative to the case entitled LB/L-DS Ventures Playa del Rey LLC versus the City of Los Angeles at all. Recommendations for council action, subject to the approval of the mayor. Number one, direct the planning department to initiate the repeal of bracketed Q conditions currently imposed on real property currently known as Playa del Rey Lagoon, 2.39 acres, APN 4116-003-004, and this is my objection, or Lot C, Del Rey Beach. And then part two is direct the planning department to initiate a rezoning of the property that will place these bracketed Q conditions back on the property. What property are they specifically addressing? Are they addressing Playa del Rey Lagoon, 2.339 acres, or Lot C, Del Rey Beach? I'd like to get some kind of, and since this comes from the city attorney, you'd think he'd want to know which property they're addressing also. Item number two I'd like to speak about is, in today's newspapers, there's two thank yous for cable TV. One from TV for us, thanking the state senate for, or the state government for passing the new law recommended by Speaker Fabian Nunez, and the other one is from Verizon, allowing people to have a choice in cable.
Thank you, sir, that's your two minutes, that's why we have the clock right there to make sure we can watch, but we thank you for your comments. If you want to give anything else, we'll make sure that the clerk can take it and we'll look at that. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. We'll make sure we have somebody come talk to you. Michael Carrion is our next speaker.
Yes, my name is Michael Carrion, and I'm from 14th District, and I'd like to touch on what Zuma Dog was talking about. If you people understand, we already voted on your term limits. If you guys don't like something, you're going to revote and revote and revote until you get what you want. Excuse me, Mr. President, I'm speaking to you personally, okay? This is, there's a new movie out by Robin Williams, and he states that, and he says a comment in that movie, politicians are like children's diapers, they should be changed often, and for the same reason. And that goes to you, Mr. President, because you personally have abused your power by taking the Brown Act and twisting it around to where it conveniences you. When somebody says something to you personally, you respond, and for a long period of time, when it's convenient to you. When somebody's asking you a question and you don't want to respond, you say, oh, I'm sorry, I can't say nothing because the Brown Act does not allow me. Bunch of hypocrisy. Chief Bratton, if you want to find Jimmy Hoffa, he goes by Superintendent Viragosa today. He's selling the city away for his own profits. He's not in New York anymore, he's here under your nose. So if you really want to do some good, put him away somewhere. This mayor's making a joke of this city. I was born and raised in this city, and it's embarrassing to tell people when I travel that I'm an Angelino. I am embarrassed to say I live in El Sarino in Los Angeles. I tell them I live in Alhambra. I tell them I live near South Pasadena, so that they don't put me with Los Angeles. It's a shame. I was born and raised in this area, I was born and raised in this community, this is my city, I am an Angelino. And I'm tired, that's why I come here and I speak as often as I do. Thank you.
Sylvia Lynn Hawkins is our next speaker, and then Michael Hunt.
Good morning, everyone, my name is Miss Sylvia Lynn Hawkins. As I move on to the next state, Memphis, Tennessee, we will no longer share my healing power ingredients of blood, vein blood, you and our doo-doo, with this City Hall of California, knowing that a pint of my blood is over $5,000, whether you are living on St. Pigeon and Field Street or in Beverly Hills. Each race, 18 races, is worth thousands of dollars if they donate any blood. Also, with no churches of any denomination, since churches and state is separated in the United States of America, since this whole council member board, my Eric Garcetti, Alex Panda, Candace, Jan Perry, Janice Heim, Wendy, Garell, Wilson, Wees, Parks, and others, and especially the school board, has stolen and used my private part illegally to gain knowledge and healing. This type of stealing to be healed would not be able to work for anyone that's stealing it, animal or people. Healing of their priests or their prime minister will not work. Your prime minister, your pastor, your bishop, your council members will die. I don't care if they're in churches or wherever. California stinks, which not all people. So y'all trying to heal, many priests are sick all over the world, they will not be healed, whether it's Prime Minister Blair, the Iran president, or Iraq president. They will die, it will not work. Thank you very much, my name is Sylvia Hawkins.
Thank you. Michael Hunt is our next speaker, and then Candido Morris will be our final public speaker.
All right, good morning, City Council, my name is Michael Hunt. We still have a lot of issues to take here, but it's one issue that touched my heart is the homeless people. I'm opening up a 40-bed shelter in West Los Angeles, I need you guys' support in bedding, housing, and everything. Herb Wesson, I'm going to need your help with the zoning in this thing. I have real estate developers who are donating property just for this cause, and I have properties in the Valley, and I have properties in West LA. So all of you guys who do good charity work and do good cause, let's help the homeless out, and let's get them bed. I got 40 beds in West LA, starting on the 1st of October.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hunt. Candido Morris is our next speaker.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members. Today's daily news, LA's second safest big city in the nation, and we want to thank those of you who have made it that way. Chief, Chief Bratton, thank you very much for making the City of Los Angeles much stronger. You council members have done that, Mayor Viragosa has done that, so please, give yourselves a hand. Sometimes we get knocked around, but we're moving in the right direction. We can actually make it even better. Chief Bratton, you were part of New York when they brought the Community Court program, you were there about four months ago, you visited again, it's a fantastic program. We hope that we can continue to support our community court here in the City of Los Angeles. Second part of my, Viragosa emphasized integrity, ethics to commissioners. The Department of Water and Power now has a group of commissioners that are absolutely unbelievable. Ms. Nichols did a wonderful job as president, now it's Mr. Nahay's turn, and they're going to do a great job for the people and for the rate payers of this great city. But how about holding management accountable? Let's hold management accountable. They're still asking for an increase in rates. We saw an individual come before your Energy and Commerce Committee back in October and lied to you, correct, Ms. Hahn, Mr. Carnes? And yet, you know what, you were asked what his position was going to be, he is now promoted to assistant manager, and they told you that they would not promote him, that he was not being promoted, yet he's now promoted. We need integrity in management. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Candido. That closes our general public comment, and we will return to the agenda. I've had a request to take Special Two out of order. We have public comment cards on this, and Ms. Perry has expressed a desire to open up public comment for 20 minutes on this, is there any objection to that? And Ms. Perry, did you want to do two minutes per speaker or a minute per speaker? Did you have any, any preference?
Sorry, Mr. President, I have one second.
Did you want to do one or minute or two minutes per speaker?
I think we need to give each speaker at the minimum two minutes, there's a lot of folks...
Okay. I will go straight through and I will try to see if there's folks who put for and against, I will try to go back and forth.
While we're waiting for the speakers come up, I would recommend that those who are here to speak today get to the point, try not to be repetitive. If somebody's already made your point, try to make a new point, but cut to the chase because with two minutes, you're really going to pack in your position and say it upfront.
Great, thank you. Our first speaker will be Don Steyer. Come forward.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am the General Counsel for the Central City East Association. We represent nearly 1,000 property owners who are affected by this proposed settlement. Our district involves primarily food processing and food preparation, highly regulated by county, state, and health standards. We know about E. coli this week in the news. In executive session, I expect that you will ask the question, what advantage does the city derive from entering into a settlement at this juncture rather than allowing the normal appellate process to take place? Many people feel that this decision will be reversed. Even in the event, Mr. President, that this decision is upheld, it represents merely a single case precedent on very limited facts, and the facts specifically did not take into account LAPD's policy to make certain there's an empty bed before an arrest is made. This decision did not address the policy that we actually use. In distinguished from entering into a proposed settlement, you propose to enter into a formal, broad-based agreement to create a limited law enforcement zone within the City of Los Angeles, where certain laws will be excused if you live on one side of the street. I question the legality of that conduct. In addition, the settlement permits the decision to remain on the books to be used in the future as legal precedent. The ACLU has consistently maintained their desire to use this as legal precedent, I have no doubt that they will do so, and I would expect you should take them very seriously.
Thank you very much.
Could I say one final thing?
I'm sorry, we've got to stick pretty strictly to two minutes. Thank you, sir. That's a second sentence, so I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Carol Schatz is our next speaker. If there's anything after the two minutes that speakers would like to submit, we'll make sure the clerk takes that, and we can take a look at them on the council. Ms. Schatz?
Thank you. Carol Schatz, President and CEO of the Central City Association, the Downtown Center BID. We both, both organizations oppose this settlement. You condemn one area of our community, you condemn the entire community. We understand LAPD's need for a tool, this is not a tool, this is not compromise, this is capitulation. The logic of the decision is perverse, using the Eighth Amendment of the US Constitution to say that you cannot, you cannot arrest someone who's lying or sleeping on the street. That precedent will continue if this settlement is reached. The facts that are the basis of this decision, we strongly dispute, and they will be on the books forever if this settlement is approved. It will be difficult to enforce, the police have to give notice before they move the tents. What's reasonable notice? Is that the next ACLU lawsuit? Nothing prohibits the police from legally enforcing 4118 until the appeal is taken or rejected, and we know that Councilmember Perry's alternative is a very realistic one, and one that allows this appeal to go forward and enforcement to go forward, and the final thing I want to say is this. In this city, we hear about the D-word, density, we hear about the G-word, gentrification. I want to introduce to you today the H-word hypocrisy. If any of you would say that you would agree to have tents encamped in front, on the public sidewalk in front of your home, or the businesses of your constituents, people peeing and pooping and probably shooting up, then go ahead and vote for this settlement. But if you believe and know in your heart that you would never allow this behavior in front of your own homes or the businesses of your constituents, you must vote no on this settlement.
Thank you, Ms. Schatz.
Thank you.
Derek Morris is our next speaker. Derek Morris is our next speaker. Going once, Derek Morris.
Mr. President, I'm not... First, it was about, you know, I have things...
We're going to go back and forth, there's not, there's some that just have general, so I'm going back and forth, but go ahead, please.
I wanted to present something else, so, okay. What I have here is, I'm talking about the environment. I have a solution I call Pollution Resolve, and global warming, it's a relationship with Earth, Sun, and Moon. This is what I wanted to present first, but can I go through?
You have to speak on the item that's before us right now.
Okay.
That's what Special Two is, so on the settlement here in the Jones case.
Okay, well, what I'll do then is ask if this could be given to you.
Okay, we'll make sure somebody gets that from you.
Thank you very much.
If you just step aside, we'll make sure somebody gets that from you. Brady Westwater will be our next speaker.
My name is Brady Westwater, I have several neighborhood council affiliations, but as normally, I have to speak as myself, because neighborhood councils have exactly 24 hours notice that this item was coming to the city council. Also, we are discovering more and more that serious issues at this city, things that should be debated publicly, are now being held behind closed, in closed-door sessions. Special interest groups now have discovered, all they have to do, if there is something they want to have happen that will not be approved by the voters, not be approved if there is public debate, all it's do is file a lawsuit, get a secret settlement, and then it's done without the public having any ability to know what's happening or to weigh in on what's happening. That is my main objection to what's happening today. You should say no to this settlement for the simple reason legislation should be held in public, not behind closed doors. And this is not a settlement, this is legislation that is being created in the guise of a settlement, and that is wrong. I have an editorial in the LA Times this morning, the Sargent Arms could hand out, anybody hasn't seen it, the other viewpoints, but I want to express today mainly is that this process is wrong and it needs to be fixed. You need to say, anything this important to citizens of Los Angeles needs to be publicly debated. Thank you.
Tom Gilmore is our next speaker. Tom Gilmore is our next speaker, he's up here. And after that, it'll be Zuma Dog, and after that, it'll be, sorry, Bill Cooper.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, council members. About eight years ago, your predecessors on the council virtually begged me and begged other business people to begin the long and difficult process of revitalizing downtown. We responded to that call with that council help. We invested, myself, over $50 million on Main Street, and subsequent to that, over $150 new million were invested on Main Street alone. Since that time, over $6 billion of new investment has happened in downtown through the auspices of the city council and the planning department, and the good wishes of the people of Los Angeles. Today, if you vote for this settlement, you will... Today, if you vote for this settlement, you will undo every single piece of good work that council did before you. Let me assure you, Main Street is part of the encampment zone. The newest, most vibrant street in your city is part of an encampment zone now. It is filled by people who are here today. Could everybody from the Old Bank District please stand up? These people, these people live in downtown 24/7. They do not go away at 9:00 p.m. They do not start working at 6:00 a.m. They are here 24/7 trying to create the newest, most vibrant neighborhood in this city. I beg of you, listen to Jan Perry on this, come up with something that protects the city, protects the homeless, because that really is part of this. I was on the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority for six years. This is the worst possible solution you could come up for the homeless. It is the worst you could do for this community. It is the worst you can do for this city. Please respond to Jan Perry and her compromise on this, and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Zuma Dog. After that, it will be Bill Cooper, and after Bill Cooper, it will be Carol Sobel.
Yes, thank you very much for this opportunity to address this most important issue for the city. We're trying to resurrect the city. We're losing business, and we're trying to attract new business, and we're having a problem with that because of the Skid Row area. Now, what we don't want is a police state to come in there and just, you know, swipe everybody off. But there is a real problem with the drug addicts and mentally ill people, and that needs to be addressed. And unfortunately, this is not really the best thing for the city now, but we all, I've talked before about compromise. The problem is, no matter what you put out there to try to do something about this, it'll be going too far for some people, not enough for others. It's going to be too expensive for some, not enough for others. But you know what? Maybe if we can at least start between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m., it will allow the chief and LAPD to take care of the problems and maybe get some of these people that need help into the proper facilities. So that's a starting point. And once again, a lot of people are upset because, gee, 9 o'clock, everybody's, you know, in front of, nobody wants to own a business or home if people could be camping out in front of it. Okay, so I think we have to take this. I think we have to do it because we need to start something. What you're saying here is we're either going to allow this to drag on and get tied up in a bunch of legal muck for years and years, and the problem's going to get worse and worse, or at least start now with something. This can maybe give Chief the wedge he needs to start addressing the issue, because once again, we could put all, we could give the contractors all the money to make all the nice buildings here, and we can have all the new facilities, and nobody's going to want to come here anyway when you have this problem. Again, very complex. It's a compromise, man. I think we have to take it to get the ball rolling. Please, though, you know, I've spent a lot of time myself on the streets, and so, believe me, I'm very sensitive. Just take a look at me. We want to make sure that the rights of the true homeless who want help get it, and let's start filtering out the drug addicts and get the mentally ill people the help they need. Zuma Dog for City Council.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bill Cooper. Carol Sobel will be after that, and then Brian Kito.
Good morning. I'm Bill Cooper. I'm a resident and a businessperson who works downtown, lives downtown. I just want to say, shame on both parties to this situation if you pass this settlement. Shame on the council, you'll be voting against us residents who've worked so hard in the last four to five years to make downtown what it is today. Shame on the ACLU for settling in this compromise. Why did they bring this fight in the first place if they're going to settle in this manner? I represent probably hundreds of people who would like to have been here this morning had they been notified in time to be here to speak. So when you're looking at me and when you're looking at the rest of these people that showed up, we cleared our schedules during the last 12 hours to be here to speak to you and ask you to not approve this settlement, to listen to Jan Perry. We're watching your votes. We're watching who's going to vote and who's going to vote for us, the residents and the taxpayers, and who's going to vote against us in the city of L.A.
Carol Sobel.
Good morning. My name is Carol Sobel. I'm one of the council in the Jones case. I want to argue against the Perry motion. I think the settlement in this case is a fair one. It gives the city more than what the Ninth Circuit suggested. We're giving up 10 feet on either side of any entrance, any driveway, any parking lot, and that is an important...
I would ask folks to please, I would ask folks to keep it down unless every speaker have the same courtesy that we afford. Applause is fine, but please, we could have no boos or hissing. Thank you. Ms. Sobel, continue.
And that is important. It's also important, I think, for the council to know that the proposal being made now by councilperson Perry through her attorneys is nothing that was ever discussed in the mediation. And I think that if people are participating in a mediation, they ought to participate fairly and not come in on the 11th hour with something that has not been discussed and weighed. It's time, I think, for the city to address this in a way that it has not. We've been engaged in litigation for three and a half years. We need to move forward, and I want to just point out in closing that when we began this litigation, we had a certain number of shelter beds and a certain number of transition beds. Four years later, according to the city's own data given to the mayor's conference on housing and hunger, we have 10 fewer transitional beds and almost the identical number of shelter beds, even though we have permitted the Frontier Hotel to empty 500 people into the street, and we are about to permit the Alexandria Hotel to empty 100 more families. That only begins to show the difference, and that is with the additional Midnight Mission. We are at the same stage we were four years ago in terms of shelter while the homeless population has grown. So whatever the outcome today, it is really time for the council to step up, because as Chief Bratton said this week, this is not a police issue. This is an issue that the council has to step up on.
Brian Kito will be our next speaker. Gwendolyn Maddox will follow, and then Orlando. I'm sorry, yes, Ms. Perry?
If you could turn my mic on for a second.
Sure.
I just want to take 30 seconds to correct the record on a statement Ms. Sobel just made. So, but I want everybody who's in here to hear this, and I did make the statement that I was never willing to abandon the appeal. I want to pursue the appeal. I did say that in the context of the mediation. I did say that within the mediation process. It is a matter of record. You can check with the mediator. I absolutely said that. I never agreed to abandon the appeal. I asked to vacate the decision. I asked that we reach a mutual understanding to vacate the decision because of what it portends. You can shake your head no, but the record will speak for itself, and if we need to, we can get the mediator on the phone, and he can substantiate that for me. But I want the public to know that I never agreed to abandon the appeal. I want to pursue the appeal. I ask that the decision be vacated.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Brian Kito. And then after Mr. Kito will be Gwendolyn Maddox and Orlando Ward.
Hello, my name is Brian Kito. I'm president of the Little Tokyo Public Safety Association. I'm a resident, 20-year resident of Little Tokyo at Third and Central. I'm a board member of the Neighborhood Council, Historical, HCN-C, and I happen to own the oldest business in Little Tokyo, was started in 1903 by my grandfather, 103 years ago. I personally, as president of Little Tokyo Public Safety, have actually gone out since 1993 patrolling the streets of Little Tokyo. Chief Bernard Parks knows that very well. But we have gone and taken volunteers out to try to protect the areas just south of our community that border Skid Row. We've done it for over 10 years. Now you're asking for a border to allow homeless to live there. It's going against the 10- to 15-year work that we've been doing, on a volunteer basis, mind you. I am a proud supporter of LAPD, but I do not accept this compromise. I also want to reiterate that on Third Street, bordering that border that will be affected, we have two daycare centers with over 140 kids in both, I mean, total of the two. We have elderly complex, it's a 15-story elderly complex which is on Third Street, Third and Omar. We have four churches of Little Tokyo's churches there, and we have the market-rate condominiums. I am obviously opposed to this. I have personally worked on this. I own a business there, and I've tried to figure out a solution on our own. We've had a moratorium by Mayor Bradley years ago that kept the police from enforcing, or the city attorney's office from enforcing the vagrancy laws. We've worked with that for many years. The homeless services have never been able to be able to succeed. We're tired of this now, and what we would like to see is, if they're going to feed them on our streets, we don't want them to come to neighboring communities to sleep. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kito. Appreciate your comments. Gwendolyn Maddox. Just Gwendolyn Maddox and then Orlando Ward, but first Gwendolyn Maddox and then Orlando It's Gwendolyn Maddox, Orlando Ward, and then Hal Bastian.
I'm sorry, I think this is the wrong thing I'm supposed to be at.
Okay, Ms. Maddox?
It's concerning the reprogram.
Okay. I will make sure somebody consults with you, make sure we have the right one for you. So if you just hang out for one second, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Orlando Ward.
Morning, members of the council. My name is Orlando Ward. I'm the Director of Public Affairs for the Midnight Mission. And there'll be plenty of people that are going to talk about the crimes and despair on Skid Row, and I'm not going to go there again. But I will say this, I cannot support any legislation that allows people to live and die on our streets. It's unconscionable in my mind and for what I do and my charge in life right now. I cannot support this compromise because it is not well thought out, does nothing to help or encourage people to get off the streets. Further, the parties crafting this compromise have failed to consider some of the practical aspects of living on the street. A simple example is this, I think it says that, yeah, from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., you can't be there, and it doesn't even consider the winter months when it gets cold and dark at 5:00 o'clock. And for four hours, if I'm living on the street, I got to figure out what I'm going to do for the next four hours. Do I set up my housing and then fall into the sights of LAPD? This thing throughout has not considered the real-life aspect of living on the street. This points to flaws in the process and that we do not have an adequate process that allowed stakeholders to help craft this compromise. This thing, at best, at best, this should be tested for 90 to 120 days before we write in a law, at best. But again, in closing, I cannot, this cannot be about rhetoric, legal gymnastics, and we need to take a look at the people, our most vulnerable population, that on this or any legislation that will allow them to continue to vanquish and die in our streets. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Hal Bastian. Hal Bastian.
Good morning, Mr. President. My name is Hal Bastian. Good morning, council members. It's a pleasure to be here today. I'm a resident of downtown Los Angeles. I live in the 14th at Third and Spring Street. I'm also professionally the Director of Economic Development for the Business Improvement District here in downtown L.A., and in that role, I recruit businesses, retailers, restaurants, and residents to move here. And lastly, I've just been re-elected to the downtown neighborhood council. I'd like to point out that today, my comments are my personal comments and do not represent any of my affiliations. Ladies and gentlemen, the renaissance of downtown Los Angeles is threatened by this proposed settlement, and I am just totally against the settlement. You should vote against it. The city has a lot of resources and a lot of lawyers. You need to spend more money on more lawyers to fight this. We've had about $13 billion worth of private sector investment in downtown L.A. since 1999. And let me tell you, on a daily basis, when I'm trying to recruit businesses and residents to downtown, I am asked, what are you going to do about the homelessness problem? And I don't have an answer. And the answer is not to ghettoize it only in this area. And as Ms. Schatz said to you, if you would be willing to have these homeless encampments in front of your homes in all 15 districts, then maybe that's something, you know, that we should consider. I'd also like to tell you that this is not a housing issue. We could go right now to San Julian Street and talk to an addict or an alcoholic and tell them that we would put them into the presidential suite at the Biltmore Hotel under the condition that they could not drink and use. Ladies and gentlemen, they're addicted. It's not a moral choice. They cannot go in. Even if a shelter bed is available, they cannot enter that shelter and stop drinking and using because there's physical consequences to that. So let's be very clear on this. It's not a housing issue. This is an addiction issue, and it's a scourge on the society that until now and until the new residents are moving downtown, we've been willing to sweep under the rug, and we got to deal with the base issue. And thanks for letting me share with you.
Thank you. We are now over the 20 minutes. It was proposed for public comment, so unless there's a motion to extend, I will read into the record the other names of the folks that we had here. Jim White, Tom Kame, Alex Maradi, Beretta Reeve, Francis Hashimoto, Matt Dowd, Michael Hunt, Ruth Schwartz, Sandy Blyfer, Mark Rosenbaum, Andy Bales, Dayon Carver, Don Garza, and Bilal Ali. And with that, I'll recognize Ms. Perry.
And I appreciate this opportunity to speak. We are also in the process of seeing if we can get the mediator on the phone to clarify the record on the point that was made earlier. I would also like to extend a public thanks to the individuals who are here today as my consultants, former judge, retired judge William Norris, who served on the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals for 17 years with distinction, and he is also the former president of the Los Angeles Police Commission, and he has joined with his partner, Edward Lazarus, here from the firm of Aiken, Gumstrass, Power, and Feld, and they are acting as my consultants today, also to clarify. The city attorney is the attorney of record for myself as a councilperson, and they are acting as consultants or advisors to me today. Now, I want to make it clear that I participated in the mediation with the ACLU, in the negotiations. It was a facilitated mediation. During the negotiations, I agreed to limited enforcement at night, but stood firm on vacating the Jones decision. My willingness to compromise was rejected. The mediated settlement, in my opinion, has no benefits for the city.
I, um...
Yes.
...am here whether we're going to discuss this in public or in closed session. I'm fine either way, but for those of us who also want to participate in this discussion, some of us are holding back because we think we're going to go into closed session.
I'm not going to get into the legal issues. I'm merely making up policy...
Why don't we pause things there? The city attorney has done a little bit of work on this to be able to scope this for the council, to reiterate what it is that would be appropriate in open as well as closed session. There are items which we could and already are discussing in open session, it can continue to, but we should be aware of which things would affect some of the litigation possibly against the city, so I'd like to ask the city attorney to detail that if that would be helpful.
I just, to clarify my point, I just think there's a semblance of unfairness for those of us who want to say things in public, but we're holding back in to do it in closed session. So if we are able to say things now in public, please advise the council that we can't do so.
And, Mr. President, I can add that I have plenty to say that has nothing to do with the lawsuit...
Sure.
...and has everything to do with policy. So, you know, I can also edit my comments right here on the floor and still use my time effectively.
Okay. We will, I will say this before the city attorney brief assessment, to answer your question, Mr. Weezer. My counsel on this is that that is each council member's decision to make as individuals, hopefully taking the advice of what is appropriate in terms of exposing ourselves to any possible litigation. Obviously, a lot of these are public issues which don't deal with the litigation specifically and can be done in open comment, but we'll hear a little bit more detail from Mr. City Attorney on this.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under the Brown Act, council can discuss in closed session only the litigation aspects of the settlement and any advice given to the city attorney, any strategy with the city attorney, any policy matters have to be in open session. If council decides to go into closed session, then there are other, only, the only discussions can be regarding the litigation and the settlement. If, when council comes out of closed session, then there's other considerations as to what to announce or whether to announce. So I believe council, if, perhaps it would be better for council to vote on whether to go into closed session. We would advise that council talk about policy in open session, and then in closed session, talk only about the litigation aspects.
Mr. President, I'm more than willing to do that.
Okay.
Talk about policy and not about anything related to the lawsuit.
And just on this point, and then we'll come back to Ms. Perry. Ms. Rosenell?
Yes, Mr. President, and I agree as much as in the sunshine, in this forum, with everybody here and the cameras going, I'd like us to continue that conversation. Frankly, I'd like to have Chief Bratton, if it's appropriate, city attorney, to come up and explain.
Well, why don't we wait on that just because at that point, we will, we have...
Whatever we can do in public, I'd like to do.
And may I finish my time?
Yeah, I can let Ms. Perry finish her time. Anybody who wishes to do that, Chief Bratton is here, and that certainly is something that we would encourage folks to do, but that will require a council member after on their speaking time to do that.
And I will, I'll edit my comments.
If there's nobody else on, if there's nobody else... If there's nobody else on, if there's nobody else on the open or closed aspect, we'll return to Ms. Perry on her time. Ms. Perry?
I have tried for many years to set an example on how to serve the homeless in our communities by increasing services, filling the gaps, and understanding that I will always have the greatest number of services in my district, including permanent supportive housing. Um, I provided all of you with graphs by, uh, council district on the number of beds that are in your district. Uh, I have 17.5% of the homeless population, uh, in the county. My district provides 39% of the homeless services. Skid Row is a recovery community, a, a community with people living here who are fighting to maintain their recovery, a community with businesses, property owners, families with children, formerly homeless individuals living in permanent supportive housing, people who are fighting to live. Most of the individuals you see on the street are African-American men. They are left there to be assaulted, to be attacked, and in some cases, to die. We need to treat this community with the same level of respect that all communities in our city want and deserve, and I want to say publicly, because I've heard way too much gossip about how I'm trying to kill this deal, so I want to say publicly, I support Chief Bratton, I support safer cities. I want to say that. And he has the authority and the right to go there now, regardless of what we do today, and take those officers in there and begin his Safer Cities Initiative. And I believe that the city attorney can provide Chief Bratton with the guidance he needs to implement safer cities. But I also have to say, to continue to overtax the very area of the city of Los Angeles where we actually want to do the right thing, we have the most services, the most people, and to provide services for people who are suffering is untenable. Two-thirds of the 88 cities in Los Angeles counties, county, do not make allowances in their zoning codes for even emergency shelters. So please, don't penalize the very area of the city that is actually doing more to help homeless people than any other part in the region. Now, one last point. The city council is the legislative body. The city council is the body that determines public policy. I hope that you'll support my motion. I'm editing my comments. I hope you'll support my motion today, as I have recommended based on, uh, some very good guidance by my consultants here today, that you allow the chief to go ahead and do his Safer Cities Initiative, and give consideration to the conditions as proposed by the ACLU. And let us pursue our other legal options, and I'll stop right there.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Our next speaker is Mr. Weiss. Mr. Weiss?
Press my button before Mr. Weezer asked his question about procedure and where we are going. Um, it, I don't know if there's a long speaker queue, but it seems to me that we may be better off getting into closed session earlier rather than later so we can get into the issues that everyone wants to talk about.
Is there anybody else who wishes to be heard in open session? There's nobody on the speaker queue from the council.
I'm not ready to answer. It's best to lie to someone that first got here. I wish it was best to lie to two.
Thank you, Mr. Garza.
It's not fair that I can't get to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Garza. We're, we're council comment right now. Is there anybody else from council wishes to be heard? If not, it would be my suggestion, colleagues, that we reset, that we go back into the executive conference room so that this room doesn't have to move, but that the council moves back there and that we go into executive session right now.
I can't speak, but I can't speak. You just don't touch me. Don't touch me, that's law.
Okay. Colleagues, let's go into accordance with California state law. Mr. City Attorney, if you'd like to cite that section, we'll go into executive session.
Yes, under government code section 549, 56.9, council is authorized to go into
Welcome back, ladies and gentlemen, to Los Angeles City Council. We have before us, so we, we had before us some special, or two from the special agenda. The motion that had, was put forward by Councilwoman Perry was voted upon. It was a 10-3 vote, which we will detail in a second, in favor of the motion as amended. Um, the amending language to the motion, um, in the therefore-move, uh, parts, I will read the entire, uh, section. "I therefore move that the city attorney be requested to provide the police department with guidelines needed to conduct operations in Skid Row, as that area is defined in the Jones case, and present these guidelines to council, and that the police department be encouraged to move forward with implementation of the Safer Cities Initiative and with consideration to conditions as proposed by the ACLU for 90 days." The second I therefore, or further-move section stays the same, that I further-move that the city attorney be instructed and authorized to continue the appeals process in regard to the court's decision in the Jones case, and all available judicial forms stayed as was. That was a 10-3 vote. Mr. Clerk, will you please read what the vote was?
The ayes were Gruehl, Hahn, Padilla, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Wesson, Zine, and Garcetti. The noes were Weezer, Rosenthal, and Weiss.
Mr. City Attorney?
And in addition for the record, there was another vote taken, whether to continue the matter. Uh, that matter failed. Uh, five members voted in favor, Padilla, Rosenthal, Weiss, Weezer, and Garcetti.
Okay. Mr. Weezer?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. If I could speak to the policy on this item, I understand we had a closed-session item in which all confidential information, uh, should remain confidential for those people in the room, not just council members, but I am completely disappointed, uh, by the action, uh, this council just took. I represent a significant portion of the Skid Row area, and I am not even clear what action this council took. It's very vague language that doesn't give any direction to our police department about what they can and cannot do. It again leaves us in limbo. I'm concerned because I don't know what to go, to do, and go back to my constituents about where we are as a city, on how we are addressing the very, very difficult issue of the homelessness issue. I'm concerned because what we voted upon is vague, does not allow our police department any clear direction on what we're doing, and I think it's trying to appease all sides. On the one hand, it's saying, "Let's go forward with the conditions that our business community was so opposed to, and impose these conditions about the geographical area, when and what times we can allow sleeping to occur in our streets," but at the same time, it's saying, "Let's appeal this." It's speaking out of both sides, and I think this is a very, very ill-advised decision that we took. I predict, the next few weeks, we're gonna have more confusion, more people in our streets, and our officers not knowing what to do. On top of that, I stand by where I stood when I voted to go against this appeal, that I believe that if we continue to enforce 41.18D without modifications, we all want safe and clean streets without criminals, but without modifications, we are criminalizing being homeless, and that is something that the city should not be proud of.
Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to stand and congratulate Mr. Weezer for, for getting up and making that important statement. Um, and I concur with what Mr. Weezer said, what happens in closed session stays in closed session. But the motion that we have, that was just reported out, that is on the record, that the clerk just read out, let's make it very clear what that is. That is a motion to reject the settlement that was reached after laborious mediation between the ACLU and the LAPD. Think about it. A mediator appointed by the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, uh, was able to get the ACLU and the LAPD to agree on an enforcement scheme. Uh, it was not satisfactory to either side. That is the essence of settlement, that is the essence of compromise, and there were certainly ample things both sides could point to in the way of deficiencies. By re, and, and that's just life. That's the way settlements work in the legal system. By rejecting that settlement, we provide the officers with less clarity rather than more clarity. We provide the officers, however well-intentioned the motion may be, with less in the way of tools to enforce laws than more. And unfortunately, because the legal process takes some time, uh, we make it more difficult for the police department to go in there and do the work that everyone in this room wants them to do, to try to enforce the law and bring some sanity to that part of Los Angeles.
Mr. Reyes?
Your colleagues, it's not often we reach this point where we stand up and start putting ourselves in a weaker position because we choose not to take the time to look at what this could mean. I appreciate what my colleagues have just said, but I also have a responsibility to the constituents of my district. I don't want to balkanize the city. I don't want to talk about what happens to your district will affect mine negatively. The fact is, homelessness prevails in all of the inner-city neighborhoods. How this affects District 14 and/or our precedent-setting issues, to me, is something that can't be decided upon at this moment. I appreciate the time and courtesy and understanding to have these designs, these guidelines to design how we're gonna come back. I think the city deserves, our communities deserves, the level of discipline and analysis to support our men and women in blue who are in the trenches every day, trying to make a difference. It serves no one to come out and say, "I don't know what this means, I'm not sure how that's going to be dealt with." It is to our benefit to look at this motion and look at these details and encourage our officers to move on these policies. And yes, we can get sued if someone chooses to sue the city, won't be the first time, but I believe there's a political will here that, and I believe in Chief Brand, I believe in Chief Beck, I know what they've done in McCarthy Park, I know what they're capable of. They can turn and able around. They can start tonight, they can start tomorrow. But the fact is, as a legislative body, we need to understand the ramifications of our actions, and I believe our communities deserve that. Because if they do start moving people out, and there is nowhere to go, they're going to end up in all the surrounding neighborhoods. So then I have to set a new program, a new policy for that area, for Boyle Heights, for Highland Park, for Cypress Park, for the River Corridor, because that's where the homeless will end up. This is a much more complicated issue. It deserves the time and the attention that we can put into it. So I am not ashamed of my vote. I think it's clear what we can do, and that we take the time to clarify and move that political will, we can do the enforcements tonight and move with the campaign that I believe the chief and the captain are capable of.
Mr. Parks?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to commend Jan Perry for all of that effort of getting us to where we are now. I am fully supportive of the fact that we're gonna go forward on the issue of the appeal. I think it's absolutely essential that we maintain and hold on to the rights of this city as a legislative body. I would not like to be in this city if we begin to parcel out pieces of the city, creating red light districts throughout, nor do I believe that we are confused. Uh, the city of Los Angeles, historically, for my 40 years, uh, here, has had a real ability to get guidelines as it relates to how they're gonna enforce a ordinance. Uh, yes, there's nothing we do that does not have some liability. We get sued on a daily basis on penal code sections that are 50 years old, and so we don't stop enforcing them, we create guidelines to give officers guidance. That guidance will come when the city attorney and the police department sits down and addresses it. I certainly, as the second-largest leader in the city as it relates to the homeless population, want that clarity. I do not want to be in the 8th district when we're suffering with the same problems that are in the 9th district, and I don't think it's healthy for us to look at Jan Perry and say, "You have a real problem, we're just happy it's not in our district." Whatever happens in this city gets replicated in other parts of the city. So I might have two or three people on Crenshaw Boulevard sleeping in the doorway, I may have a few people in, along the freeway, I do not have the thousands that are concentrated in one area, but I have almost 7,000 homeless people in the 8th district. And so I want to make sure that we have enforcement guidelines that are universal through the city. I also think it's important that this whole issue is based, in my judgment, on a false premise that if we had beds, the homeless problem would go away. That is not true, because we can't force people into beds, and we can't force them into drug treatment, we can't force them to take their medication. So all that may sound good in some legal opinion, but the more we support those kinds of poorly thought-out decisions, the more we give up our own legislative power, and the more we mislead, and the more that we do not serve the public that we were voted to serve. So I'm very pleased that Jan Perry put forth the effort. I'm pleased not just for her district, but for all of our districts, so that we will have a consistency without, throughout this city to ensure that there's enforcement across the board, and that we will not give up our legislative power, and we will not bend to a legal decision that everyone knows is not appropriate in this city, nor should we bind every western city in the United States to that legal decision.
Ms. Perry?
I just wanted to rise to say this has been a very complicated and difficult situation, and I just want to say thank you to everybody for, uh, engaging in good faith in what was a very rigorous, uh, discussion.
Mr. Weezer?
I just wanted to, again, for a point of clarification, um, ask our city attorney what exactly we voted upon, um, so that the public is aware of what, what action was taken.
I want to state for the record while the city attorney is getting ready for--
Please hold my time, I still--
Sure. While, while the city attorney is, is reading that as well, I wanted to state for the record that it was, it was exclusively city employees and council members that were in the closed session. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for the copy. Um, in closed session, council moved to request, that's, or have the city attorney request to provide, be requested to provide the police department guidelines needed to conduct operations in Skid Row, as that area is defined in the Jones case, and that the police department be encouraged to move forward with implementation of the Safer Cities Initiative and with consideration to the proposals by the ACLU. Moreover, that the city attorney's office would be presenting these guidelines to council. Council further moved that the city attorney be instructed and authorized to continue the appeal process in regards to the-- the appeal process in regards to the court's decision in the Jones case in all available judicial forums.
It was also for 90 days.
Thank you very much. So for those of my constituents who are here today and who expressed themselves earlier today, what the council took action upon was to enforce the part of the mediation that created a certain section of this city to have certain guidelines and conditions as to when or when not 41.18D will be enforced. So there will be no enforcement on 41.18D between 9:00 PM and 6:00 AM. It's enforceable at all other times. There's a geographical area that you should all be very aware of, or where this applies and doesn't apply. And it's enforceable at all times at locations within 10 feet of any entrance, exit, driveway, or loading dock. I'm saying that right here very clearly, because I believe this motion that we adopted was very vague as to whether, in fact, that is what we are doing or not. If that is not what we're doing, I would ask our city attorney or anybody else to correct me. But since I couldn't get any guidance as to what exactly we are voting upon, I'm saying this in public, so at least we could start creating some semblance of an agreement as to what we voted upon. The police officers in the room feel that that's not what they're directed to do. I ask you to stand up at this time and let us know at this time as well, because I didn't have that clear of a response when I asked for that. I just wanted to make that clear. And again, I think we are creating more chaos in our streets than this is helping.
Ms. Perry. Okay. We've already voted on this issue, so we'll go into the next item. Mr. City Attorney, just clearly for the record, we announced the vote. Do we need to re-vote here in open session?
No, we don't.
Okay. And we announced that vote, who voted which way, and what the vote was about. So with that, we'll move to the next item.
Mr. President, do you wish to go back to the regular agenda?
Yes, please.
The first item would be the appointment of, item 12, which is the appointment of Mr. David Louis to the Pueblo de Los Angeles Historical Monument Authority.
Is Mr. Ruiz still here? If not, why don't we take this up? Anybody wishing to be heard on this? Please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That appointment is made. Next item, please.
Item 42 was the reappointment of Mr. Richard Barron to the Cultural Heritage Commission.
Is the nominee here as well? Thank you for your patience, sir. Come on forward. I want to thank you for your service on the commission and give you this opportunity to speak a little bit, to hear anything, say anything about your service, your interest in continuing to this body before we vote. Welcome. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Richard Barron. I'm currently serving on the Cultural Heritage Commission, and I've been reappointed by Mayor Antonio Villarreal. I've enjoyed my service in the past year on the commission and hope to continue to participate in the cultural monuments of the City of Los Angeles. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Sure. Any questions for Mr. Barron? Because reputation and record speak for themselves, I do want to say there is a public speaker card on this item. So let me call forward at this time. Mr. Matt Dowd to speak on this item. Mr. Dowd?
Thank you very much. If you look along the bottom of your screen right now, you'll see this is a communication from Planning and Land Use Management reappointment to the Cultural Heritage Commission. We see a lot of this, there's a lot of talk about what is cultural heritage. Culture, there's a lot of cultures in this city, many cultures. And one of them is an indisputable forum, which is Venice Beach for free expression. That is a cultural consideration. I just want to point that out.
Can we speak to the nominee in particular? Do you have thoughts on that?
Yeah, he's getting reappointed to the Cultural Heritage Commission. Is that what we see down the bottom of the screen here? I think that's what the people at home will see. Now, I just want to point out, sir, I hope you do a great job. I know you're going to look after the city, but I just want to point out Venice is one of those cultural heritage places that needs to be protected. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I know Mr. Laban, he's excused today, but would be very eager to communicate that the committee unanimously supported your reappointment and also offer his good wishes. So with that, Mr. Reyes is our next speaker.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to rise and support Mr. Barron on his work. We go back probably to the early '90s when we were talking about the Highland Park issues and creating one of the largest overlay zones, the stone overlays in the city. And through all the different machinations, as we went through the issues as we built the gold line, then the blue line. So I strongly support Mr. Barron. I want to thank him for his hard work. In relation to your experience, Mr. Barron, and looking at how we need to cultivate more talent, more energy in this realm, as an appointee, do you have any ideas of how we can share your wealth of information, experience with others, so that we can have others who have the abilities that you do and skill set in dealing with these issues? Because you've been in the arena for quite some time. I think there's another arena that you're participating in. How can we share that and look at you as a teacher, if you will, in bringing up more leadership?
I wish there was an easy answer to that question. I think I personally try to promote community members to volunteer in the community. I think it's a worthwhile endeavor for members of the community to participate, and participate in a positive way that deals with the issues of a particular community. And that's always been my interest, as you well know, as participating in Highland Park, Mount Washington, Northeast Los Angeles, politics and growth issues and whatnot. So I'm an architect and I have a small architectural office. I encourage the younger architects in my office to get involved as much as I can. You know, I understand what you're saying and I appreciate it, and I try to encourage people to get involved. Other than that, I don't really know. I mean, you know...
That's something we should put some, maybe some time into it and create that opportunity and access with all the skills and...
Maybe we should have lunch.
Appreciate that, Mr. Barron. Thank you very much and our encouragement and support.
Thank you very much. Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rosendahl is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you so much. Hello. Sorry we kept you waiting, but we had other matters...
Yeah, we had a big deal today.
...city government to do. Look, cultural heritage and the commission, help me out on this. How do you determine if a building should be preserved or not, and what experience, when you've been doing this the last few years, can you share with us? In my district, the 11th district, there was a big effort on various projects. How do you come up with the criteria? That's my first question. Hold on a minute.
Well, it's in the city charter. It's defined, the criteria is defined in the city charter. The conditions are if a building represents as an icon of a particular building style, in a building style can be garden housing, which you were involved in, to the city hall. There's a great variety of that. It can be that it was, that one of the issues in the charter is whether it was designed by an architect that was represented or influenced his era, such as Rudolf Schindler's work in the City of Los Angeles. Or it can be an issue where a particular event occurred, such as Bobby Kennedy being shot at the...
Ambassador.
At the Ambassador Hotel. So those are the kinds of things that we look at within the Cultural Heritage Commission. It's always most difficult when we have the applicant not be the owner and the owner objects to being a cultural monument. That is always the toughest position for...
Yeah, certainly terribly controversial and becomes something that's difficult for all of us to deal with. Here's my question. We have some funds and we want to do an analysis of cultural heritage areas. The 11th district, we've been requesting to come in, take a look at our stuff and see if we can designate it, so we don't get in the middle of fights and battles. Where are we on that?
Well, you need to take that up with Mr. Ken Bernstein, who is the leader in that effort. There's also a very vibrant HPOZ effort, Historic Preservation Overlay Zone, in the City of Los Angeles, which we're involved with. And there definitely needs to be more funding for studies regarding HPOZs. I've been trying to encourage a program where USC preservation program could be a class in helping get the studies under our university program, so that would reduce the cost of that. And I think that's going to happen in one of the HPOZ areas out in the valley.
Last question frankly is, you've now stepped up again to the plate. Lessons learned in the previous and what your vision is going forward?
Well, I think the important part is fairness and understanding, you know, the efforts of the commission. I think the commission that we have right now is a very good commission. We don't always agree, but we always respect each other's opinions. I'm very pleased to work on the commission, and I'm looking forward to continuing to work there.
Thank you very much for coming back into it. We appreciate it very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to be heard on this nomination? If not, let's open the roll on the renomination, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Congratulations again.
Thank you very much.
Great to have you for another round of service. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item 11 was called special for a card from the public.
Yeah, item number 11 is before us. I'd like to call forward at this time on item 11, William Watson. And thank you for your patience, sir. Appreciate it. Mr. Watson.
Mr. President and council members, my name is William Watson. I am the owner, William Watson, of the property located at 1106 West 42nd Street. I have occupied this property for some time. And on December 22, 2005, the Department of Building and Safety ordered the Department of Water and Power to discontinue my electricity and water. In doing so, it halted my work in the lighted areas of the units. And the water discontinuing allowed the gases to come up into the areas of the apartments. It has been since, it's been nine months since this occurred, and I have yet to get back into the place to continue my work. In April of this year, Department of Building and Safety installed a fence on my properties and prevented me from having access with my vehicles or any equipment that's necessary to get into the building. At this present time, I feel as if that I've been harmed by the delays of my work by the Department of Building and Safety. I would like at this time for the council to have the Department of Building and Safety to remove the fence, so I'll be able to get back into my property and to restore my electricity and my water.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments on this item. Any council members? Mr. Parks?
What's the address? Okay. Why don't you sit there and somebody will come and talk to you.
We'll have staff...
Would you have a seat and somebody will come and talk to you?
If you'll sit down, we'll have staff come talk to you, sir.
It's Jan's.
Okay. And we'll hold that on the table just until that's finished. Next item, please.
Item 17 was called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks, item 17.
Yes, I just, on that item, just want to make a verbal motion that due to the length of time of this lawsuit and the potential liability, that we ask the city attorney to come before Budget and Finance on a quarterly basis to give us an update on this lawsuit.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. All right, if we can open the roll on... Are we, I'm sorry, you're good?
Yes. And also would like to have a fourth with on 41.
Okay. Let's open the roll on this one first, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
And if there's no objection, we'll send 41 fourth with as well. Next item?
Item 20 was called special by Councilmember Zine.
Mr. Zine, we have item number 20 before us. I'd like to recognize you at this time.
Thank you, Mr. President. The item involves the special fund that this council adopted, Special Fund for Efficiency Projects and Police Hiring. And I would move that the CO report be approved on this matter, which earmarks a specific amount for the general fund, and anything left over would then go to this Special Fund for Efficiency and Projects for Police Hiring. I understand that Budget and Finance had another report that wasn't supporting that. And the concern I have is if we have this Special Fund for Efficiency Projects and Police Hiring, that we should be sure that we have funds for it. What happens with the unclaimed money seized by the LAPD is traditionally goes into the general fund. And what this provides is that the general fund would always receive a minimum of $700,000 if that was generated, and anything over that would then go into this Special Fund for Efficiency Projects for the police. There's also a sunset clause by 2012 that would sunset. And my concern, if we're going to have the special fund, we need to provide funds for it to assist the LAPD. We talk about public safety, number one priority, in the City of Los Angeles, but to have a fund without funds earmarked for it, it doesn't really make any sense, other than we're saying we're going to do something. This actually puts teeth in the ability to give that fund the dollars that are over and above the $700,000 annually. And again, this is unclaimed money, which the police department generates. Traditionally, it's all been put in the general fund. What this will provide is, again, $700,000 into the general fund, and anything over that amount would go into this Special Fund for Efficiency Projects and Police Hiring that we brought in. Councilmember Gruel authored it, and I seconded this motion, and this was back in March of 2005. So that would be my request, that we approve the CO report as of June 13 on this matter.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second that. Ms. Gruel seconds. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. On that issue, I think we had a long discussion in Budget and Finance, and the general belief of the unanimous vote of the committee was that due to the fact that during the budget process, the committee had put forth a financial policy dealing with funding the police as the top priority, it would not serve our interests, particularly in this coming year, of moving funds from the general fund into a more restricted account, so that we wouldn't have access to it to fill other needs. The police department's budget clearly has been well-stocked. Mrs. Gruel, we had the discussion about whether we wanted to maintain the issue of having the efficiency fund, and no one disagreed with that. But here, we're actually taking money out of the general fund to put it in a more restrictive account that you have less access to. And so that was why the Budget and Finance Committee chose not to go in that direction, because we had made such an overt effort in the Personnel Department, in the Police Department, in all of the budgets, to make sure that the Police Department was more than adequately funded. And so that was the rationale, because it gives us less flexibility.
Mr. Smith?
Well, thank you. I want to echo Mr. Parks and also remind the council that we are looking at a very problematic and troublesome budget year next year, probably, that there's tremendous reductions in store that are on the horizon. And right now, we're not able to spend all the money we've given LAPD to hire so far. We haven't met our goals in the last two years. And so to dedicate an amount of money right now, in addition to what we've already given them, when they're not even meeting those hiring goals, with the budget problems that are looming next year, I think is problematic for us. And I'd rather us have the flexibility to deal on it on a year-by-year basis than do it at one time. So I think we need to consider what Mr. Parks said and also consider the very serious issues that are facing us next year in the budget that are probably going to happen, and we're already beginning to prepare for, and that's over a $200 million loss. So I don't think we should be taking anything out of the general fund now to add to that fund, although I'd like to hire more cops. We've given them resources, we're just not able to spend them at this time, and let's deal with it a year-by-year basis.
Ms. Gruel, and then Mr. Zine. Ms. Gruel?
Thank you. And I second Mr. Zine's motion for us to have a discussion. We did have a long conversation, and Mr. Parks and Mr. Smith are correct that when we talked about that and the flexibility. I don't know, Mr. Zine, and again, as someone who, we helped create the Special Efficiency Fund and Police Hiring, I know a question, I don't know if there's a CAO... I know a question, I don't know if there's a CAO person or CLA person here about how much money this actually is and it's not, has it been used for the police department in the past or just general fund? If you could hold my time and, I'm not sure if that's my... Sorry, Shannon, I'm looking at you because you were the one person down there.
Counselman, if I remember correctly, it's roughly somewhere between $2 and $3 million. It fluctuates on any given year. Right now, in the police efficiency fund, there is a surplus in that fund. So we haven't, but traditionally, that money has been a general fund receipt.
So it's not gone to the police in the past?
No, it has not.
Okay. And it is fluctuated in its amount? It's usually used on one-time costs versus ongoing?
Right. Well, generally, if it comes in as a general fund, it could be used for any purpose.
Right.
With regard to the police efficiency fund, there is a surplus because we haven't been able to hire all the officers that the council would like to hire.
We did use a substantial amount of it, though, this year for one-time costs related to supporting the police department.
Yes, in the current year budget, you did do that.
Yeah, we used a substantial amount of that. So I don't know, Mr. Zine, whether or not this is an item that we kind of revisit in another year and say, should we consider that as we look at next year's kind of budget? I just want to ask you that question, Mr. Zine, because I think there was a strong feeling from the budget committee. I was a little bit on both sides trying to figure out what I wanted to do because I believe in the efficiency fund, but also heard from my colleagues, the challenges with targeting right now when we put in substantial amount on the other side.
The council could do that. They could decide at some later point to do a direct appropriation. For example, if money came into the forfeited assets or whatever, it's unclaimed monies, I believe.
Unclaimed funds.
That if the council at some point wanted to just do a direct appropriation, say that we collected $500,000 and the council wanted to do a direct appropriation, you could do that at that time.
I'm finished.
Mr. Zine?
It'd be nice to know when that money comes in. The problem is, we don't know when that money comes. And I understand the issue with budget and finance and the gloomy forecast for the future. The concern I have is that we have a fund, Special Fund for Efficiency Projects and Police Hiring. If we don't fund that with this, where are we going to fund it? What is the source of funding for this particular fund that was established by this council? We thought this would be an appropriate place. The police department generates the dollars, the unclaimed funds go into it, now it's a fund that has assets. If we don't divert the dollars that we're discussing now, how are we going to fund this fund or should we just collapse that fund?
It has been funded in a couple of different fashions. One of the first funding sources was actually some money provided into the fund through efficiencies. And that's how it was originally created. During one of the budget cycles, I believe that there was a direct appropriation, just simply transferring monies from the general fund into this fund. And so that's how it was also funded. So there are a couple of different ways. I think you were looking for an ongoing source, but even with an ongoing source at this time and given some of the challenges that we have with the budget next year, there was some concern about restricting ourselves and then therefore having to make reductions in other programs and then having this money sit in this fund unused.
And currently, there's, as I understand, there's 1 point, currently 2.2 million currently in the unclaimed money fund. And with that, it's been accumulating for the last couple of years because we've been putting that money into that. And with this allocation, $800,000 would go to the police hiring account and the rest of it, the 1.4, would go to, I believe it's 1.4, goes to the general fund. But the concern I have is that if police sees it, it's not claimed, it goes in the general fund, if that's the process that this body wants. And then this questionable fund, where the dollars actually come from? If there's a $500 million recovery, we don't know that. We don't hear about that. It's not brought to the body's attention to say, well, let's take a portion of that and put it in this fund. The department wants to hire 1,000 officers, they need equipment for the officers. It's more than just hiring the individuals. It's all the equipment that has to go along with that hiring. And if we don't have a funding source for it, which I believe this will be appropriate funding source, the question is, it's a hit and miss. Is the fund going to be there and not have funds? Is it going to have funds one year and not the other year? And if they don't receive, if the unclaimed funds don't reach a $700,000, it doesn't receive anything. So what we're trying to do is structure this so the general fund will receive the bulk of it and then whatever is left over goes into this fund. But I understand the budget, that this year, we're looking good with the budget, next year, it's not anticipation, not looking good. But the concern is, how do we have this fund where we don't have the peaks and valleys with the police department, where we have funds, we hire, we don't have funds, we don't hire? And we're trying to have this mandate of 1,000 additional officers and have the continuing funding source available for that.
Well, the unclaimed monies, whenever there is unclaimed monies that would be turned over, they would come to this body for approval anyways. So you would have that ability to do it at that time. So that would be one way. You can have a running total, I suppose, of how much we've collected and how much we were expecting to receive. And at that time, when you take that action, you could make a determination at that time to actually move it into that fund.
And how often do we get reports on that?
It fluctuates.
What about the...
It can happen two, three, four times a year.
But could we have quarterly reporting on the amounts?
It's basically when there is money that could be turned over, when it is unclaimed and available for transfer, that's when it would come to this body for approval.
And there's no set schedule for that?
No.
Okay, Mr. President, I still think that when we have a fund that has sporadic funding, it creates a problem. I'd also like to hear from the personnel department, since part of this was supposed to be used for hiring for police officers. And if there's anyone here from the personnel department that can, I think they're coming in now, to respond to what type of funding source we have. If we want to hire 1,000 officers, we have the signing bonuses, we have the $1,000 that goes to individuals, city employees that hire someone. And if we can now have the personnel department explain the funding, and we're talking about item number 20 regarding the unclaimed monies fund with an appropriation to the funding, the efficiency projects, Special Fund for Police Hiring, how we have that funded? And the concern is that it's not going to go into there, the extra money that we receive from the general fund. So can you explain where we're getting the dollars, how we have this funding for hiring and the recruitment of new police officers?
Good afternoon, Scott DeYoung, Personnel Department. I have with me Charlotte Starkey, who is the manager of the Recruitment Section, and Bruce Witten, who is the department's Public Information Officer. We currently have a budget of approximately $2.2 million for police officer recruitment. We're competing with the Sheriff's Department, who has a budget this year of $6 million. We're competing with the Highway Patrol, who recently announced that they'd like to hire 500 new people, as well as just about every other agency in the state on a certain level. We could certainly use any additional funding we could get. We currently have a contract out, or an RFP out, excuse me, looking for a vendor that can take a look at our recruitment efforts, tell us what we're doing well, what we're not doing so well, how we can do a better job. Certainly, we're looking for funding once we've got that contract in place. We could use additional funds for additional outreach to underrepresented communities and underrepresented groups. So any additional funding that would be available to us for recruitment purposes would be incredibly valuable in meeting the public safety goals.
And did you mention how much you have now?
Approximately $2.2 million for police officer recruitment this year.
And how much do we have left?
Counselman, right now, we have allocated through contract and earmarks roughly about two-thirds of it because we're purchasing for an entire year to get the best bang for our buck. Right now, uncommitted is probably in the neighborhood of $700,000, the 2.2.
And when that's depleted, what do you do?
We have anticipated that we'll have the money to do the campaign. We based our campaign on the $2.2 million. So we have a contingency fund for special events and opportunities that we did not anticipate. But in case of a truly magnificent opportunity, we're going to have to come back to council for additional funds. What this money would give us is an opportunity to go into areas we haven't been before. We are doing outreach to women, to communities of color. This kind of money would allow us to do creative things on the internet, be able to saturate markets that don't normally consider the Los Angeles Police Department as a career opportunity. We can go on to television, we can do targeted radio. If we had this kind of money, a creative approach, that brought the attention of these underserved communities to the fabulous careers available at the LAPD, I think you'd see some real results.
Did you have any comments on that? Because the concern is, the unclaimed funds go into the general fund. What we're trying to do is have 700,000 of those go into the general fund. Whatever's over that would go into this fund that would assist Personnel Department with the number one priority of hiring more police officers. And if we don't do that, if we don't have the funding, now obviously you can't do the outreach, we don't hire the 1,000 additional officers and we fail in our mission to have this the number one priority. The response from others is that we're going to face in maybe a gloomy fiscal year down the road and all these funds should go into the general fund and whatever happens with the others, if we have funds, we do, if we don't, we don't. How do you respond to that?
Well, we're going to certainly do everything within our power and within our budget, whatever it may be, to not fail in meeting the city's public safety goals. Certainly, again, any assistance that we can get will help us to ensure that we do or perhaps even exceed it. I think the mayor's goals for this year are really kind of modest, given the overall growth he wants in the department. And if we can exceed those goals, so much the better. So any funds that we could have that would help us exceed the goal would be beneficial for the city in the long run.
Okay, I thank you for coming over and commenting that. I know you're responsible for the recruitment. Can you tell me how it's going so far this fiscal year?
It continues to be an uphill battle. The unemployment rate is incredibly low. It's only at about 4.5%. We're, again, as I said, in competition with a lot of agencies. However, as of this point in the fiscal year, we are actually ahead of our hiring goals and we would like to get even farther ahead.
Okay, and how's our attrition, retirements and attrition rate?
The most recent numbers I've seen is it's about what the department has projected so far this year. They're projecting attrition, I don't have the exact number, of a little over 500. And to this point, it's pretty close to their projections.
So if we recruit and add 500 and lose 500, our net gain will be zero?
Correct.
So we're just trying to fill the void or to...
Well, our goal this year is to hire 650 so we can grow the department by 150, assuming that attrition does remain at about 500. If we can hire more than that, I'm sure the department wouldn't object.
Okay, thank you. Madam President, I still think that since the police department finds the money, it goes in the unclaimed fund. I understand the budget issues, there is a sunset clause in here. I think if we're going to say it's a priority, then we should fund it with the money in excess of the $700,000 a year. Again, it goes into the general fund. If there's no asset forfeiture, I mean, if there's no unclaimed funds, nothing goes into the general fund. So it's not a revenue source that we can depend on. But when it is there, then I think it'll be appropriate, if we're going to make public safety number one priority, that we take anything over $700,000. So that'd be my motion to accept the CAO's report on that for the additional funds over $700,000 and make the appropriate transfer. Thank you.
Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to ask, you mentioned this is, what, the third month of the fiscal year? And you were concerned that you may run out of money. Has that been brought before either public safety or budget and finance?
I think, Counselman, what, Counselman Zine thought, what would you do if you ran out of money? We don't anticipate running out of money. We planned our campaign based on the 2.2 authorized by the council.
Okay, but let me ask you, have you submitted anything that would enhance your budget? Because I noticed you mentioned a number of things you could get to if you had more money.
At this time, we have not submitted a supplemental, to my knowledge.
Okay. Has the mayor's office been purveyed to what your needs are?
Yes, sir, we meet with them on a weekly basis. It may be that a supplemental mid-year will be submitted, but at this time, we're working within the allocated funds given to us.
Are they somewhat organizing your efforts on recruitment as to place, location, time, groups? Are they having a role in that?
There's a role involved, but I believe we are...
I mean, but that's the reason for the meetings, for them to be updated and briefed on what you're doing.
It's to keep them informed of what's happening rather than...
Yeah, colleagues, I would just like, we're only in the third month of the fiscal year, that if you have these needs, we certainly need to have them come through the mayor's office and so that if you're dealing with additional issues and to look at the third year, the fiscal year, third month of the fiscal year and say, we have these new needs without the mayor's office and bringing them to be vetted through the committee process seems to be kind of an in-run around the budget. So I would certainly be pleased to look at what the needs are, pleased to get it in the committee and have the city attorney, the CAO and the CLA to look at it. And certainly, we'd encourage it. But again, I would ask that we move the committee report because in my judgment, it's the best way to manage our funds through this fiscal year.
Thank you. That's the last speaker. Mr. Clerk, if you could clarify what is before us at this moment?
Yes, Mr. Zine made a motion to move the CAO report dated June 13th instead of the Budget and Finance Committee report. So the first vote for council would be whether to actually substitute that.
Okay. So colleagues, so it's clear, this is substituting the Budget Committee report with Mr. Zine's motion.
The question on whether to substitute.
Whether to substitute the motion. Okay. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Six ayes, four noes.
Okay, that does not pass.
So what's before you now is the Budget and Finance Report?
And the Budget and Finance Report. Okay. Madam Clerk, open the roll on the Budget and Finance Report, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Nine ayes, one no.
Okay, that's approved. Next item.
Item 62 was called special for a card from the public and there is an amending motion that has been circulated.
Mr. Matt Dowd?
Thank you very much. First of all, it's getting cold here in chambers. Ask someone can turn up the heat a little. I can't afford a ice coat. I'd love one. Anyway, item 62 is another communication from the city attorney. And I've been talking about the city attorney yesterday and today. This one's a ratification of a settlement. I'd just like to point out, I was impressed, we got a 9-2 vote on that city attorney move yesterday. So there's two people, at least, were listening. But the interesting thing here is that there's a fiscal impact statement on the end of this one because they're paying a settlement here to the plaintiff of $650,000. And it says at the end, fiscal impact statement, none submitted by the city attorney, nor the city administrative officer, nor the chief legislative analyst has completed a financial analysis of this report. So they haven't bothered to submit any analysis of a $650,000 payment. But I know why, because I just seen item 17, you just took $600,000 out of a sewer fund and put it in the city attorney fund. So really, we're just playing musical chairs with the money. But I think there is an impact and the impact's on the sewer fund. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. Mr. Parks?
For clarity for those who are listening, there is no city attorney or CLA, CAO financial statement because this is a court settlement in which the judge has mandated its payment. And so that's the $650,000. The other issue we have circulating, or everyone should have, 62A. This process was started with litigation paid from, by the litigation account in the city attorney's office. We want to ensure that if this property is ever sold by the city, the funds are returned to the litigation account so that it is clear as to the funding effort. The other thing, we're asking the CAO and the CLA to develop some policy guidelines on this type of issue. And so we have 62A and we'd like to, once it's voted on, to have it forthwith. The judge is waiting for this settlement.
Thank you. That item is before us with the amending motion. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Ten ayes.
That item has been approved. We'd ask that go forthwith. Next item?
Item 63 was called special for a card from the public.
Yes, Zumada.
Yeah, thanks. Hello, check. Yes, thanks so much. This is about the special waiver event fees that I've been talking about. There's been a lot of corruption and used for the wrong purposes and I've been talking very loud about that. But, you know, it must be noted, when something's being done... But, you know, it must be noted, when something's being done properly, we had something called Hola, a street fair with Hola, and I looked on the internet, I called the organization, so money is being used at the right time. The street fair, I believe it was in Herb Weston's district, we did have a street fair where the tab was picked up for the city, for Heart of Los Angeles, a group that helps kids' education, very good, you know, very good group. We had a long day, I'm just going to say, let's see more things like Hola, and more of the things it's supposed to be used for, and hopefully, hopefully we'll see more of these and less of the way it's not supposed to. I can't even talk anymore, because, ah, that's it, y'all, I'm going home, have a nice day.
Thank you. Seeing no one on the queue, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on that item, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Ten ayes.
Thank you, next item?
Item 69 was called special for a card from the public.
Yes, Mr. Matt Dowd, item 69.
Thank you, this is another EAA item, only because it's a big one, the 30th Annual Simon Rodea Watts Towers Jazz Festival, two-day event, $26,000. There it is, on the bottom of the screen right now, you can see it. Now, why don't these events have sponsors who are paying these costs? It's $26,000. And, you know, I'm a musician, I'm all in favor of jazz festivals, but, you know, sometimes you have to question who gets the priority for this money? Whose districts get $26,000, and who only gets $300 for a block party? There's a lot of discrepancy here. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney, for keeping hold of my time.
Thank you. This item is now before us. Madam Clerk, if you could please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Zine?
I'd like to announce that the Personnel Committee will meet today at 4 o'clock, instead of 2 o'clock, Personnel Committee at 4 o'clock this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Item 70, called special for a card from the public.
Okay, and that would be Mr. Matt Dowd.
All right, this is the one I was waiting for. This is the best one, the Second Annual Light at the Lighthouse, Han and Parks, $4,700, $4,700 for the Second Annual Light at the Lighthouse. Now, that's compelling government business, I'm sure, and the whole city of Los Angeles, I'm sure they're all going to be that, the annual light of the lighthouse, there it is, but, you know, give it a, give it a yes, go on, put it through.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, open the roll on this item, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
That item's been approved. Next item?
Item 78 was called special for a card from the public.
Three guesses who that is, Mr. Matt Dowd.
Okay, let's just have a look on the bottom of the screen again, it's right along here. Oh, yeah, the Chicken Teriyaki Night, $1,200, sponsored by the Maryknoll Japanese Catholic Center. So if they're sponsoring it all, how come we're paying $1,225? But anyway, no, it's okay, don't even, just put it through.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
Next item?
Item 86, called special for a card from the public.
We have two cards, Mr. Matt Dowd and Jose Aguilar.
Jose.
Mr. Dowd?
Okay, thank you very much, this is to resolve, to declare that September 25 to 28 be the Race Equality and Inclusive Communities Week. The Race Equality and Inclusive Communities Week. So we only have race equality in Los Angeles for one week, and I'll tell you when it is, we're declaring it, it's not even a week, it's only the 25th, 26th, 27th, it's only, it's a four-day week. So equality, race equality and inclusive communities is a four-day week, and it's happening from September 25 to 28. You know, this is like declaring Literacy Day, oh my God, we're only literacy, literate in this city, excuse me, for one day, and there's another one here, Family Day, a day to eat dinner with your children in the city of Los Angeles. I mean, we should make one day where you don't eat dinner with your family, and all the rest you should anyway, we don't need to make Literacy Days and Inclusive Racial Equality Weeks. I mean, what the hell are we turning this city into? But you know what? It's already set, it's already done, let's just give it the unanimous vote, we'll all get out of here. Thank you.
Mr. Aguilar?
I got here a little late to deal with the homeless issue, I have a lot of regret about that, but this Race Equality and Inclusive Communities Week should be held at the containment, homeless containment area in Skid Row. This is where I want the Race Equality and Inclusive Communities Week. I want to keep Skid Row where it's at, I don't want to see Skid Row bleeding into Boyle Heights, running around, Hollenbeck Park, we had issues of homeless people in Hollenbeck Park. There's a high rate of pedophiles in Skid Row, sex offenders, and I don't want the sex offenders bleeding into my community in Boyle Heights. We have a lot of children, a lot of grade school children there, and I really would like for you to enforce the law in Skid Row, get rid of the drug dealers, put them in jail, make sure if they need jails, build them, but do not have Skid Row bleeding into Boyle Heights and the surrounding communities. Thank you very much.
Jose, Jose.
Thank you. Mr. Aguilar, Madam Clerk, if you could open the roll on this item, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
That item is approved. Next item?
Item 88 was being held on the desk for an amendment and a new ordinance, and both of those have been circulated to the council.
Thank you. The amendment has been circulated, so if there's no other questions on that item, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
Those items, that item's been approved, thank you. Next item?
Item 89 was being held on the desk for Ms. Han, but she has left the meeting, and her office indicates they would like it continued one more week.
One more week, okay, that item would be continued one more week? Next item?
That would leave item one from the special meeting, and that was called special for a card from the public.
I think it was from Don Garza, as item number one on special...
You wanted number two, but let's give him a chance to talk on number two.
It's been indicated to me that I think you had wanted to be on item number two, and so please use your minutes to either on item one or two that we considered.
The thing was that Jan Perry told me it was special item number one. I don't know why she would tell me that, I mean, I wanted to speak on the item, because I live in Skid Row, that's where I live, day in and day out. There are people dying in my neighborhood, they ain't all sexual, you throw us in the midst of all those people that are sexual predators and people that prey on others, you do that, and with this containment area that you want to create between 9:00 and 6:00, you're only going to enforce, you know, you're only going to allow people to sleep in my neighborhood between 9:00 and 6:00 in the morning and nowhere else, that's exactly what you're creating. I don't know what the deal was in the back, but you know what? There's something wrong here. And you know what I think it is? It's an election year coming up. It's an election year coming up, and you know what? That's the problem. You don't want to scare the surrounding communities into thinking you're going to, you know, enforce the laws in my neighborhood, Mr. Weiss. But you know what, Mr. Weiss? We're all going to die one day, and you know what that means? We are going to be accountable to a God, and I can't wait, I don't know what God you have, but when you want to create genocide in one community, it's going to happen. Nobody's going to vote for you, and nobody's going to vote for any of these people that want to kill us all in that neighborhood. You think I'm crazy? You come down there today, and you talk to the people that I know that are killing themselves day in and day out. I don't know, maybe Chief Bratton has something up his sleeve, but I don't know what you guys voted on today, I don't know why you didn't let me talk. We're scared to death of what y'all are doing, you're going to concentrate everybody in one place between 9:00 and 6:00 a.m. It's going to put the cops in danger too. They're all going to be in tents. There's something, there's something inherent, you need to, if you're going to enforce, if you're going to allow people to sleep between 9:00 and 6:00, you need to do that all over the city, not just in one place, in my neighborhood, Mr. Huizar. You've got homeless people in your neighborhood already, they're not bleeding over there, I don't see very many African-American homeless people going into Boyle Heights, they're already there, they're already there, they're not going over there. And you know what else is going to, what I think is going on with Jessica's Law coming out? You know why they want to move out the 500 families? Because those pedophiles, those sex offenders aren't going to be able to live in your neighborhood anymore, and so they're going to come and be concentrated in my neighborhood. You guys are like, you know what? We're not, I'm sorry, Eric Garcetti, I'm sorry, dude, but I don't know what y'all voted on today, I'm going to have to look at it, but you know what? I'm not, I'm not impressed with what y'all did, I'm not impressed with the ACLU, and I'm not impressed with an official containment zone in my neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Garza, and we'll make sure, whether Mr. Garcetti's office or Ms. Perry's office can share with you what occurred today. Item one is now before us, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
That item has been approved. Mr. Clerk?
Item 11 was being held on the desk, and I understand from the council district that issue has been resolved, so you can take a vote on the item.
Thank you. Item 11 is now before us, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
That item's been approved. Next item?
Council has motions for posting a referral?
Those will be posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
Thank you. Do we have announcements today, colleagues? Do we have adjourning motions? Adjourning motions? Okay, if not, Mr. Clerk, we will adjourn the meeting.
Please call the roll.